You said you have one person. That's nice, very nice. And I see the title has changed. The title. Good evening. I call to order the December 4th, 2017, regular meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and ask you to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please join me for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates, Ms. Bolton, Mrs. Hoffman, Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Minera?
Here.
Mr. Timmons?
Here.
President Copeland-Dansby?
Yes, I'm here. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the following meetings: regular meeting, November 1st, 2017; special meeting, November 16th, 2017; and special public meeting, November 16th, 2017.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to, I've noticed a typo just recently on the special meeting, November 16th. I'd like to pull that and re-submit them December 18th if that pleases the board.
Thank you. I'm asking for approval of minutes for a regular meeting, November 1st, 2017, and a special public meeting, November 16th, 2017.
So move.
Is there a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Ms. Jones, as Chair of Policy Committee, please present the November 6th, 2017 Committee Meeting Report.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to submit for board approval the minutes of the Policy Committee. That was, uh, meeting was held on November 6th, which was earlier in the month. There were a number of items, I'll give you the short version, but there were a number of items discussed, and most of these items are in continual discussion as we met today. And you will see in here, there's also data related to the enrollment in neighborhood elementary schools, which has been an ongoing topic. We'll continue to work on that, and it is our goal to have something a little more final at the next meeting. The one area that you're gonna hear more about later, and I won't talk about it, but is the student voice and policy, which has been a very important initiative. And so, having said that, I'm going to submit the minutes as written.
Do board members have any questions or comments about the report?
One quick update, the time on it was incorrect. So it should say four o'clock.
Yes, it should say four o'clock.
Just to let our minutes match what we noticed.
That's right, yes, thank you.
You get that, Ms. Davis? Thank you. Do board members have any other questions or comments about the report? Ms. Hoffman, is an involved person with student achievement, please present the November 17th, 2017 Committee Meeting Report.
Sure, with our chair out of town, I'll take it over. So, um, we talked about a new topic, which was the Business Advisory Council. So it was brought to our attention that there's Ohio Revised Code that requires boards to have a Business Advisory Council and a new statute that's gonna require OD to establish standards for the operation of Business Advisory Councils. And so, we agreed that this is great. It fits naturally with MyTomorrow. We already have the Business Education Connectivity Council, so it could possibly just be expanded to include this. And so, we are going to be making an assignment at the end of the meeting today that the Policy Committee draft a policy for this council so that we are in line with OD. We also talked about the board's role in curriculum and textbook adoption. We're really excited because Ms. Amat is gonna have a rotating schedule of her curriculum managers coming in and talking about all the cool stuff that they're doing. So we'll hear a lot more from them. We also talked about the arts curriculum, and specifically in equity in the distribution of after-school arts activities, and some recommendations that will be coming to the board in terms of where we start in making that more equitable. We got an update on the usage of Schoology and kind of came up with an outline for the community conversations on later high school start times. One quick clarification in the minutes. On the third page, under Arts Curriculum, where it says "Action", Dr. Rucknick will provide the committee with a report on which schools charge art fees and which do not. We want to clarify that that should be which schools charge fees for after-school arts activities. So these aren't things happening during the day. This means some schools might have drama, or, you know, or a dance class or something like that after school. Some of those are free to the kids. Some of them, the families have to pay. And we're trying to see what's the equity issue involved there.
To add it "after-school"?
After-school arts, yep. And I submit them as written.
Thank you.
Good work.
Ms. Jones, please present the November 21st, 2017 Finance Committee Meeting Report.
Yes. As usual, Finance Committee was very lively discussion, as always. One of the things, we were, some of us attended the OSBA Conference in November, and one of the things that happened is that we had the opportunity to meet with some of the legislators. And our superintendent did a wonderful job in presenting just information about the district progress and some of the projects that we're working on. And I attended that meeting, as well as Ms. Bates, and Lauren Worley was there. So that was a very good meeting. But we, at the Finance Committee meeting, we had our regular government relations update from our liaisons. We had discussions, again, about, which is an ongoing update from Cincinnati Preschool Promise, and presentation from the Village of Amberly around their tax increment financing. Trina Levens from our Fiscal Services gave a wonderful presentation on the supplier diversity update, talking about our vendors and our contracts and as representative of our minority community. So that was quite informative, and we believe that we're making very good progress in terms of being equitable in that process. Lauren Worley gave a very strong presentation on the marketing plan for closing charter schools. This was a subject that came up after a assignment or request by the Finance Committee that previous month as we were looking at ways to track some of the dollars about, related to the charter schools. So that was an excellent presentation, and we're looking to, and I'm sure she will report on this at a later time, but we're looking to develop our ECOT program for those kids who might be leaving the ECOT program that's failing in the state. So we're excited about that. So, other than that, we did have our Treasurers' Report on our General Fund and some of our budget and calculation information. So I present the minutes as written.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions or comments? Keep it going, Ms. Jones, and present to us the Policy Committee Meeting Report from your November 28th meeting.
I am just so excited. I am going to defer this to Ms., to Board Member Hoffman because she has been the initiator and the facilitator of this particular process, and we have an exciting update on that.
Yes, so our Policy Committee meeting that we held on November 28th was another working meeting with representatives from all of our high schools, so about 40 students with us, to build out a program that would authentically incorporate their perspectives into the practice and decision-making of the board. It has been such a really fun process for us, and hopefully for the kids as well. Starting with kind of the big question, as if this was something they were interested in, the answer being yes. And then, really, what could this look like in CPS? It's been really great to see the kids working together. Lots of the students have talked about how there aren't that many opportunities for them to work together across schools, that they compete athletically against each other, but they don't actually have a chance to collaborate and work with each other on a lot. And so we saw a lot of exchanging of contact info between students before they would leave. And it's been really exciting. And so the last meeting we had was to present them with a draft policy so that we can move this from an initiative into something permanent in our district. They gave us feedback on that. And then they got to work in their school teams, talking about what this program could look like at their school and at the district level. And tonight, the exciting update is we have a policy to present to the board and hopefully pass. And we have a student here to help us discuss that later.
Nice. Fantastic. Do board members have any questions or comments about the report? We need a voice vote to accept the committee reports as written. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The committee reports are accepted. So tonight, we have two presentations. I'm gonna turn over the podium to our illustrious Superintendent Mitchell.
Thank you. So tonight, I'm truly honored to stand and be able to make two presentations to wonderful educators and Cincinnati Public Schools. It makes me so proud to be a member of our district, and especially when you hear about the work of these two extraordinary people. So I'm gonna ask them both to come down to this area, Rebecca Beach and Leslie Hatimer. They're very humble, and so they're probably embarrassed that they're being acknowledged, but we really need to recognize and celebrate them. These two women are winners of the Martha Holding Jennings Foundation Fellows. And so they've been identified as fellows. We're so lucky within our district to have not one, but two people represent Cincinnati Public with this great distinction. So this is a highly regarded distinction. It's an honor that is given each year to master educators. And so, you have to do extremely good work in order to be recognized for this foundation. These two ladies have worked tirelessly in our district as counselors, really making sure that the three things happen in terms of our kids being enrolled, being employed, or being enlisted. So they have worked really hard to make sure that our kids have a bright future beyond Cincinnati Public Schools, and that's what we're all about at the end of the school day. Both of these women were enrolled in a three-part professional development series that's offered by the foundation in which they had to do projects and lessons. And so, again, it is an extreme honor to have two people from Cincinnati Public. Rebecca Beach is being honored for her commitment to professional learning and excellent teaching to ensure deep learning for Ohio Public School students. So Rebecca Beach. And Leslie Hatimer is also being recognized for her commitment to professional learning and excellent teaching to ensure deep learning for Ohio's public school students. And I must say that Rebecca's mother is here, and she is a teacher, retired teacher from Cincinnati Public Schools Woodward.
She was a Jennings, she was a Jennings, my mom.
Oh, where is she?
She's right there.
Okay.
And she was a Jennings fellow also.
Very nice. So Leslie Hatimer. So if you have any questions for them about their project, that might be interesting to hear.
We can give you a brief summary.
That would be great.
Come to the microphone.
Okay.
Sure.
The work with the Jennings Foundation was really interesting because it, it's really about deep learning. And when Rebecca and I first started this project, it was very apparent that it was curriculum in base. And as school counselors, we felt like, wait a minute, this doesn't really apply to us. And then all of a sudden, we had a student who expressed a lot of concern about the lack of diversity in the curriculum at Taft. And all of a sudden, we had a starting point. So Rebecca can kind of talk about a couple of initiatives that we did.
Okay, so, well, the first thing that happened, actually, was Laura Mitchell came down and met with the panel of students to hear their concerns. So we really felt supported by the district, which was great. And we asked what they would like to see, and they expressed to us that they learn a lot about African-American history and slavery, but they don't learn about African history and, you know, the history beyond slavery, or before slavery, and that this kind of was oppressive, in a sense, which makes sense. And so, we worked with our principal and our Social Studies Department and Mr. Leach to add a course at Taft of African Studies, which actually began this year. And we worked to try to have a richer curriculum for that. Additionally, we began a project which we're still working on. I'm no longer at Taft, but I'm really committed to this project because I think it's going to be really powerful. We added a Culture Club at Taft High School, and we are working to get genetic testing done. And then ultimately, the students involved in the Culture Collaborative would like to visit Africa and explore some of their roots. And so, we're really hoping this will happen. We have submitted a grant for the genetic testing to be done through the Jennings Foundation, and they seem pretty excited about the project. Do you want to say anything more about it?
No, it was just, it was a really great opportunity to have something that was, happened kind of organically within Taft, and to really, you know, like you talk about student voices, to really let the kids have a voice and empower them. And we were happy to just be their stewards. So it was a great opportunity, so thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Very nice, thank you. Pretty awesome. Our final presentation tonight will be about the academics of Vision 2020. Superintendent, do you have an introduction?
Again, just really excited about the work of our teachers and our principals in our Vision 2020 schools. Again, we wanted to make sure that we weren't just putting a fancy new glittery program in a school without the academic programming to go along with it. So very excited for the support of our teachers and our principals. And so, Tiana Amat, one of the Assistant Superintendents, who worked with the Vision 2020 schools last year as a principal-coach, will do an intro.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Mitchell, and Treasurer Ms. Wagner. It is an absolute pleasure to present an update on Vision 2020. I'm going to start by asking Principal Davie and her team of folks, Ms. Easley, Zachariah, Mr. Bray, to come on up as I get started. This is definitely a collaboration. Before we get started in the overview, I think it's important to look at the why. And it really started with the commitment from my board to provide high-quality, culturally-relevant, responsible, responsive curricula for all students and teachers, regardless of our learning sites. So it was really a push to have equity and access for all students. And so, our superintendent took that very seriously and was passionate. And we came up with Vision 2020. And it was providing high, rigorous academic opportunity for all students in all neighborhood schools. We had some trailblazers. Start out in 2016, Chase School, Arts and Culture, Chiviet, Gifted Education, Haze &amp; High Tech, Pleasant Hill Environmental Science, Rothenberg and Westwood, Student Enterprise, and Woodford Arts and Culture. And so what we're gonna do right now is take a peek into those programs, and then right after, we will have Ms. Davie come up and talk specifically about their first-year experience.
Vision 2020. My Tomorrow is a multi-year program designed to strengthen the quality of Cincinnati Public Schools. Last school year, the focus went to seven neighborhood schools. Specialized curriculum was tailored to the character and priorities of the neighborhoods where the schools are located.
With the completion of the first year, parents are excited to see how these programs are preparing the students for the challenges of the future. And the students, well, they're pretty excited too.
What I like best about the High Tech program is that it gives me and all my classmates a chance to be able to learn about this technology and how to use it. For the kids who didn't know how to use it, they know how to use it now. And for the kids who knew how to use it, they're more advanced with it now.
He's a very technical child because this is the day and age that they live in.
You're controlling this with a remote control. You have to write all the code to make this do the motions at a zoom.
I like coding a lot, and coding is helping me learn how, the way things move and the way you have to make things move in order to do it the way that you want it to go.
I think this program is preparing Nayer for the world. Everything is social media, or it's digital, or it's an app for it. I think that this program is preparing him to go anywhere around the world that he wants to go to be anything that he would like to be.
I think the students really love that they have a chance to take ownership of their own learning. They get to learn something that's completely new to them.
I wanna own a business so I can help people come off the streets, like not being homeless, get them their own apartment, a job, a car, be wealthy.
I really like it because I didn't know that I could do anything like this, and I really see myself creating a business and being part of a business in the future.
I think this helps her to basically expand, know that she can expand her license to be anything she wants to be.
Shark Tank is building your own business and seeing how other people like it and give feedback with them.
Getting to experience how entrepreneurship feels and how to do the cost per unit and the pricing, the marketing, and it has to be something that people like.
Getting to meet My Opin today was a great experience.
And she's a very inspiring woman. It was so wonderful to meet her, and to get her advice was amazing.
I think she's become very confident, and she feels like she can do whatever she puts her mind to.
Instead of just focusing on reading, math, science, and social studies, they can focus on the arts. So it's like reaching the student wherever they are.
I like everything about Daisy. Daisy makes me happy.
He's blossoming his reading, he's outgoing. It's really made him more, I believe, more of a rounded individual.
In a lot of ways, it helps them academically, and it also helps them with their discipline.
You get to sit down with your friends and play music with them, and then show them things that they might have not known.
Addison was actually struggling a little bit in math. Around first grade, we got her started in cello, and she actually saw a trajectory of her grades just increasing and has had straight A's ever since.
It's giving him more options. You know, he can, you know, be a cellist, or, you know, an author, or painter, scientist.
They are learning more about different cultures that are all over in our own community, and so they can better relate to other people. The students love, love, love it.
So what I like best about the environmental settings program here at Pleasantville Academy is the opportunity I have to expose children to learn outside of the classroom.
We've been planting, watering, and watching it grow, and it's pretty funny.
I like about it that we can discover it, see the pollen in it, see insects that go to get the honey.
As a parent, what I like most about the program is that it teaches the kids to go outside of the box, to step outside of the usual, regular math, science, and it gives us hands-on.
There's animals outside that you can learn about. It's all different kinds of things outside that you can observe.
You get to learn about different plants and stuff. And we get to learn how they grow, like peas, carrots, and apples.
This program helps our kids later in their life because it's teaching them how to think analytically, how to not just take what they see right off the bat and go with that answer. What they need to do is they need to dive down deeper and think, okay, what's really happening here?
A lot of times, our gifted children are singled out, and they feel like no one understands that I can read the Wall Street Journal at three years old. But when they're in a group with other students that have similar interests or similar academic abilities or intelligence, whatever it may be, then they can blossom.
What I like about this school so much is like how the teachers really interact with the students, and we get on heads-on learning.
And I like all my teachers very much. They're all very kind, and they all make you feel like you're someone special, and they all very much help you learn more and get what you're learning.
I think it'll increase your knowledge, like, in the broad scheme of things, so you can have a number of career options.
And we want our kids to do more than go to a job from nine to five. We want them to love it because we might have someone in our class that's gonna discover the cure for cancer.
Vision 2020 is making our neighborhood schools better, and neighborhood schools are the building blocks of the Cincinnati Public School system.
It is an absolute pleasure to introduce Principal Lyndsay Davie. I had the opportunity to work very closely with Ms. Davie as a principal-coach. I can say she is an instructional leader, is very passionate about her students, a visionary. And she has brought a team of folks here to share their first-year experience. So please help me welcome Ms. Davie to the platform. Good evening, board members. I am going to try to wrap up extraordinary program that we have been engaged in now for two years, well, a year and a half, in a short span of time. I can talk a long time about what's been going on at Chase because I'm excited about it. And the staff and students at Chase are excited about it as well. So I'm gonna start with last year. So what you're looking at now, Chase Elementary School Arts and Culture Program, the Harlem Renaissance. And so as I move forward in talking about it, you'll understand what the Harlem Renaissance is all about. So last year, we started the Arts and Cultures Program, not really having any idea of what it was gonna turn out to be or what it was gonna look like, just kind of brainstorming and talking about different ideas and different ways to make it work. Myself and a group of teachers traveled to Florida, to the Pinellas County Schools, to see how it was being implemented there in Florida. And got some great ideas, saw some great success happening with it, and wanted to bring it back, though, and tweak it to make it our own, to make it fit Chase, to make it fit CPS. So with that, I got with a group of my teachers, along with a couple of community members. We discussed it on our LSDMC, and then we talked about it as a school planning team. And hearing the words of my now-superintendent, then my deputy superintendent, that you have to think big, you have to start small, you have to scale fast. And so that is what we did. We had big ideas, but we knew we had to start small. We had to sample different ways of doing things until we could get it right, to make it better for the second year. And we did that. So last year, we had electives, we had field experiences, we had co-teaching going on in the building. And so, but we were doing it in samples. We were doing it at a slow pace, just to get it to work. So I kept the idea in front of my staff that we are creating a blueprint. There is no blueprint. We are creating the blueprint for this program because this program is specific to Chase, is specific to the community of Northside. I wanna make sure I do this right. How do I go to the next slide? Okay. So as we move from last year, getting towards the end of the year, as we got better and we got, I guess, became better experts, not experts, but better experts in the field of looking at Arts and Cultures and how to integrate it into the school, we had one of our teachers come to us with a proposal for year two. And the proposal was, let's come up with the theme of the Harlem Renaissance, and let's integrate that into the Arts and Cultures. So let's go into next year with a theme, and let's talk about what that would look like, create curriculum and lesson plans around the Harlem Renaissance, and let's partner with Woodford Elementary School, who's also doing Arts and Cultures. So I then got on the phone with the principal. At Woodford, we talked about it, and so we agreed that we would bring that into our schools, along with talking to the planning team for Vision 2020. And with that, we just kind of, again, been trying to create a blueprint for what it looks like. So here, we're looking at integrated lessons at Chase. So one of the main things that we are doing with the Arts and Cultures Program is the cross-curricular lessons and integrating the Arts and Cultures into the cross-curricular lessons and integrating the arts and cultures into the content areas. So with that, each homeroom teacher is paired with a specialist and that's with an art teacher, music teacher, or PE teacher. The teachers and specialists plan a lesson together to teach a core subject through the arts, meeting once every two weeks. So they meet on, we have A week, B week. So A week may be planning week and then the B week would be the teaching week. So, and we do that. So twice a month they meet and plan the lesson, twice a month they meet and they teach the lesson together. And so we actually started that last year. This year we were able to amp it up a little bit because we are in partnership with the Cincinnati Art Association. Last year we were in partnership with the Cincinnati Art Academy. So with that, we partnered with them as well to help get those lessons integrated. So if you look kindergarten is math and art are partnered together. First grade, we have social studies, ELA and art partnered together. Second grade, social studies, ELA and music. Third grade, social studies and art. And then our, the grades, in our M H classes are our special niche classes, growth and fine motor skills, identification skills, and music. So, and the partnerships go all the way up to our sixth grade. So that's just a sample of what it looks like and how they're partnered. So they'll partner first semester with those teachers and then second semester will flip it and they'll partner with opposite teachers that they didn't partner with for the first semester. So here, an integrated lesson. So I have Ms. Easley here, who was the idea behind, she was the mind behind bringing in the Harlem Renaissance. And I'm not going to get too much into the Harlem Renaissance because I have a student here that's going to explain that to you. But we chose that time to study because it serves as a culturally responsive format that in turn motivates and inspires our students to learn in artistic, creative, and cross-curricular ways. So that is the, that was the root of why we moved forward with that. So Ms. Easley is going to talk a little bit about her co-teaching lesson, just to give you an example of what we, of how we do things.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
This slide here shows me teaching in my second grade class with Ms. Pash. Can you stand up, Ms. Pash? I co-teach with Ms. Pash, the music teacher. So she and I. So this lesson here, I was introducing Ella Fitzgerald. We read Atiska the Tasket and students made up their own scat based on the reading and we watched some of her old clips on YouTube so they can, you know, hear her music and hear what scatting is about and how like scatting started rap. So they get to, you know, see both sides. So that slide there is showing me reading Atiska the Tasket to students. And then we played a game that Ms. Pash made up using the song Atiska the Tasket. I think that's, that's really. And then these are the scats on that slide right there that the students made up. I can't really read them, but they was like Scooby dooby doo, shoebe doo, boo boo. They were making up all type of rhymes and everything, trying to scat like Ella and trying to integrate what we were talking about in school and scatting at the same time. So my vision for the concept is to provide a guide of instruction to properly integrate arts and culture into all subject areas, into music, into science, into mathematics, into reading, everything. So I wanted to just create a point of reference for teachers so that they would have a guide and whatever subject that you teach, you can relate it to Harlem Renaissance. And that's what we've been doing this year. I'm excited because my students get to learn how to tap this year. So at the end of the school, yeah, they got brand new tap shoes, Dr. Rudnick. So we're excited about that.
Thank you, Ms. Easley. So that just gives you an idea of the rich experiences that our students are getting that they probably would not otherwise get. So just to, I can't wait to see the first presentation of our second graders tap dancing for us. So this slide just shows you, we also have the electives. So last year we started with just a couple of electives just to see how it would work in our fifth and sixth grade classes. So we had students that would break out small groups and they would go and they would have elective classes with the specialist and then our artist in residence would come, came in on Fridays and did an elective with them. So the electives groups that we kind of kept from last year, we kept the beats group and the beats group is a group of students who use iPads to come up with their own beats and their own music. We have the, we have the art studio that we kept from last year. The art studio is where they work with the art teacher and they create art that they then in turn can sell and put on display in the school. We had the African dance and drumming group last year that we kept for this year, where the students, there was a more talented group of students who were more interested in the dance and then a group that was more interested in the drumming, who got more intense instruction on the African dance and the drumming. This year we added drama, which we were excited about. We have a drama instructor who now comes in weekly and does an elective with our students who are interested in drama. And then we have an exciting tumbling elective where our students who are more athletic get an opportunity to show off their talents and learn how to properly tumble, safely tumble without breaking their necks. So we're excited about that. So we will have, in the spring, we will have a showcase where these electives will then be put on display for everyone to be a part of and see. We use, we'll actually do it in the winter as well on a smaller scale, but in the spring we'll have a bigger showcase for those electives. So our partners that we are currently partnering with specifically to arts and culture are the Biokodo African Dance Group, the Cincinnati Art Museum, the Cincinnati Art Association, who has been a true blessing this year because they are now, they brought in Pinellas County from Florida and they're actually working with our teachers to intensify and to put quality to those co-teaching lessons and bringing in different strategies they can use in the classroom that worked for them well in Florida. So we are partnering with them this year. We've had several professional development activities and meetings where they have come in and actually trained and worked with our staff. The Cincinnati Conservatory of Music, Drama Kinetics, who is located right in Northside, is partnering with us and has been for the last three years. Jazz Alive comes in and works with our students. The Children's Theater, our students travel to the Children's Theater to see Broadway professional plays being put on as a part of their field experience, as well as the Children's Theater comes in and does performances in the building as well. And then Wordplay of Cincinnati, who is also located in Northside, also partners with our school and have for the past couple of years as well. So those are our partners specific to arts and culture. So now I'm going to step to the side and I want my, well, Ms. Easley already came. Mr. Bray, who was one of our parents, who has been with us since the start of Arts and Cultures last year, him and his daughter have been with us and he's going to give you a short testimonial of what it's meant to him as a parent and to his daughter.
Good evening. I went, I came to Chase last year, went and talked to Ms. Davey and was really excited. She talked about the 2020 program and told me what it was all about and it seemed pretty cool. I mean, my daughter just spent three years in Catholic school, so we jumped into public school and I was really excited about the program that she had laid out and it was really cool. She's been, Aubrey's been really excited to go to school. The teacher interaction has been really good, loves the arts, the crafts, the club. She did the beat club. She's done the Drama Kinetics thing this year and, you know, there's been lots of involvement with school that's, it's been exciting and nurturing and she looks forward to, you know, learning new things with it. The other cool thing they do is like the little awards. At the end of each quarter, they give them awards for different behavior and stuff, which in Aubrey's eyes, she's tickled pink to get awards and bells and whistles and stuff. So, but it's been really neat, really, really nurturing and I'm looking forward to she gets through this year and will be in there one more year to get her growing and expanding with education and the teacher and staff are very involved and they do communicate well with my child learning there. So very excited.
And I chose to bring Mr. Bray because I remember last year when he called me, well, last summer, prior to last year, his daughter was going into public school and he was terrified and he asked me for a special transfer for his daughter to come to Chase because they actually didn't live in the neighborhood of Chase. They were in the CPS district but not in the neighborhood. So he called and talked to me and asked me, could he please have a special transfer? He had heard so many great things about Chase and he really wanted to entrust us with his daughter. And of course I couldn't say no. And so, and it's been a great relationship ever since he's came. He's very dedicated. We appreciate Mr. Bray. Okay. Okay, yeah, okay. So I have a student who is going to come now and he's going to talk about the Harlem Renaissance and what it has meant to him and an assignment or lesson that they have learned. He's a sixth grade student and he's going to talk about a sixth grade math lesson that he's had with the Harlem Renaissance. And then he has some gifts that he's going to give to each board member. Come on, Zach, Zachary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Zachary Booker. I'm a sixth grader at Chase Elementary. I'm going to tell you about the Harlem Renaissance. The Harlem Renaissance started in the early 1920s. When World, when World War I ended, there were many job openings, so African Americans knew that they could find a job up north. This was their chance to have equality. They went to Chicago, New York, and Detroit. The Harlem Renaissance was a period in time where folks ignored segregation, came together and had a good time. Cab Calloway performed at the Cotton Club, Jacob Lawrence painted scenes of the Great Migration, and Ella Fitzgerald was an amazing singer. When the stock market crashed, the Harlem Renaissance started to fade away, but by then, the Harlem Renaissance made a huge impact on our society today. Earlier this year, my classmates and I created art that hangs in our hallway. It consists of seventeen tiles that spell out the Harlem Renaissance. Everyone who comes into Chase knows immediately what we are studying this year. In sixth grade, we combined math with art to discuss the Harlem Renaissance. We picked a famous person to research. I picked Langston Hughes. He was a poet. We practiced integers and symmetry while we drew the other half of the faces. In conclusion, we are learning about an important topic in African, in American history at Chase Elementary. This is important to students because this is their history and the leaders from the Harlem Renaissance opened doors for us. Thank you.
So what Zachary is passing out to you now is his, the outcome of his project, where they in math class, again, talked about integers, the lines of symmetry, and they took half of the face of Ella, he had Ella Fitzgerald, half of, no, Langston Hughes. He took half of the face and then based on what he learned in math, he had to draw the other half of the face to make it match. So different students in the classroom had different historical people from the Harlem Renaissance time and each of them did the same thing with a different person. So that was the result of what Zachary did. He did a great job and we just wanted to share with you what our students are learning and how they're integrating the arts with the content.
Very nice. Don't leave, don't leave. Stay there. Don't go, don't go. Congratulations, just awesome. Do board members have any comments? Yes.
Ms. Davey, I remember when our former superintendent did her last State of the Union, not State of the Union, State of the Schools. And you were right here and you very respectfully and forcefully said something to the effect of, it's about time we give some attention to the neighborhood schools.
It's our time to shine.
Yes, I remembered that. And I am so just touched by what I am seeing tonight in terms of the growth and what you all are doing and this young man and the parent who are coming in here as testimonies about the good work that you're doing at the school. And I wanted you to know that I've also heard in the community from people who have talked about how they see a change in Chase. And so I thank you for that. I thank all of your team for the good work that you all have done and I, you are on my list to come visit soon, so.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Any other board members? I appreciate your work and I too remember that State of the Schools program and I wasn't going to go into all that, but I ran into Ms. Davey just this past weekend and I told her, as I was on the campaign trail not too long ago, I met some of her students. And her students were so excited to tell me about you and about the work that's happening at Chase. So to bring in a team and a group, I think is phenomenal. The other thing I wanted to mention, I was really impressed with that video and thank you for including parents and the voice of the parents in that video. Too often I think we may have misconceptions that our parents don't participate with our students, but we do and I'm really excited to see that. So big ups. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any kudos? Oh gosh, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, we're only halfway done. I'm sorry. I want to stress that part of this was really, the business we're in is education and just share the academic growth. So here you have the seven schools and their performance index and the growth at every school, just phenomenal. Just phenomenal there. And then here, I just wanted to take the time to highlight, these are some significant gains in ELA. So if we look at Chase, for instance, in third grade in 2016, about thirty-two percent and then jumped to about sixty-five percent. Chivviet, about forty-one percent to eighty-one percent. Woodford, fourth grade, twenty-two percent to close to fifty percent. Just really tremendous gains. The same for math. Looking at Pleasant Hill, thirty-nine percent to over eighty percent. Tremendous, tremendous. So just to talk about the how, it really starts with the fundamental belief that all students can achieve, bottom line. And we knew we had to engage school, family, and community. So the school formula was really teachers coming together. We really focused our instructional coaches to work with teachers in planning, in looking at data, and being able to be flexible and aligning those great themes with instruction. Saw the list of wonderful community partners we had and then all of the schools had engagement nights with families, whether it was a literacy night or families coming out to see kids perform. And you just feel the energy when you enter the building and having all hands on deck to really support Vision 2020. Again, to quote our superintendent, think big, start small, scale fast. So we have this year, another nine schools participating. So if I can have John P. Parker family come up and they will do a presentation on this year's implementation of Vision 2020. And I would like to present Dr. Mack.
Good evening, everyone. We at John P. Parker School want to thank you all for the opportunity just to share what is happening at our school. We are so excited about our Vision 2020 program called Global Environmental Literacy. Okay, I'm sorry. So what is global environmental literacy? Well, it's understanding and appreciating the natural world and our place as human beings in it. It's also becoming a steward of our world locally, regionally, nationally, and globally. We call our program GEL for Global Environmental Literacy. So what is GEL? Well, basically we're using our Community Learning Center, the My Tomorrow Initiative, as well as Vision 2020 to enhance the learning experiences of our students. We have five areas that we're focusing on. Global citizenship, environmental literacy, digital literacy, health and wellness, as well as service learning. How are we doing this? Well, we're implementing innovative learning experiences. We have our students out in field experiences, getting hands-on opportunities with their learning. We have lots of project-based learning going on. We're using our digital tools and we're also encouraging our students to become servants in our community by empowering them with student voice and strengthening our families to support their children. If you notice, there's pictures throughout for some of the excursions that the kids have been on this year. So environmental literacy, we're starting with our preschoolers with environmental literacy. And we have a school-based garden with twelve beds. We have We have a hydroponics tower that the students are using to cultivate vegetables. We have a fruit orchard and other trees that the students have planted. We also have a pumpkin patch. This year, they were able to get sixty pumpkins out of their pumpkin patch. They also used our pumpkin patch, I'll talk about a little later, but they also used it as really a way to engage our students with special needs in mathematics study, which was really cool. So there's scientific study going on in a social context. Our students are learning about mussels in the classroom. They've been a part of the River Reach Project. They're part of the Wade Foundation Living Curriculum Project. They're also planning to learn about climate change through a climate change study. And they've implemented a food desert study, which in the picture you can see, their chicken, they had a person come in and talk about chickens and hatching chickens, and they actually hatched their own chickens. And we have a student here tonight who'd like to share with you about his chickens. This year, they're also learning about composting and recycling. So we had a media report, and I don't know how to pull this up, but WCPO came out and they did a media report with our students in the garden. You can check it out online just to see, you know, what our kids are doing. It's very informative, and you can see the kids actually in our school gardens. And what you see in the picture on the right is actual produce that came out of our garden. That particular day when WCPO came, they actually harvested twenty-five pounds of Global citizenship. We're basically using our global citizenship program to enhance social studies in our school. Our students are taking community walks, they're learning about their community. So we're starting right at home in our own neighborhood, and we're also allowing the students to have opportunities to go citywide, statewide, nationally, and this year, they will be traveling to Canada to have that global experience. And students are in the process of getting their passports so that in May, they can actually take this journey. And this journey is a part of our Roadmap to Freedom Project, where our students are basically tracing the Underground Railroad from Maysville, Kentucky, to Dresden, Ontario, Canada, through Ohio, Pennsylvania, New York, and then back through Michigan. We're also part of the Living Legends Project, where our students are learning about the living legends of African Americans and their impact on steam. Digital literacy is another component of our program. Our students have blended learning opportunities. We have laptops and tablets in every classroom. We now have 3D printing through our GE additive project, Elmo's e-beams, and we're using lots of educational apps to enhance our students' learning. If you notice in that picture there, those orange computers, they were donated by one of our wonderful partners. They had a team-building experience where they brought teams from across the country together to assemble those computers and donated them to our sixth-grade students. Health and wellness is another aspect of our program. Of course, through our food services, our students are getting healthy meals and snacks regularly, but we also have physical education daily. Our students have learned about mindfulness and are implementing those activities in the classroom. We have the Fuel Up to Play 6D program with the NFL. We are offering nutrition training. In the picture, you can see our smoothie bike that the kids love to ride on to make smoothies. But we also have lots of different explorations. We have the ballet, we have soccer and tennis as well. So really helping our students to understand the importance of their own health and wellness. Service learning, that's where our students really are making an impact on the community, and they're learning that this world does not necessarily just revolve around them, that they have a role to play in this world. So our preschoolers are even doing service learning. Last year, they learned about, you know, circles with balls, and then they also learned about circumference. That's a big word, but our preschoolers know what that means. Our first graders, they collected shoes from the community. By the time they were finished, our ELA was full of three hundred shoes, and they took those shoes and donated them and used the proceeds to help a family buy, a family with an autistic child buy a service dog. I can go on and on. Our third graders used the hydroponics tower, which you see there in the picture, to actually, they actually grew lettuce, and then they invited their adopters, their business that adopted them, to come in and have Thanksgiving dinner, and they served their lettuce to the adopters. There are many opportunities, but I can't, I just can't go on without, I already mentioned the chickens, but I can't go on without saying our PTO even got in the act. Our PTO, they wrote a grant to Marison Academy, and they actually got a grant to display character flags in Madisonville and at our school. They wanted to make sure that everyone understood the importance of character strengths. So they took it upon themselves to write the grant and to do all the research related and actually get those character strengths out in the community. And then they went so far as to have T-shirts made where it says, "My character strength is," and then on the back it has their actual character strength, which is aligned to our advisory program. So we really went through a progression to get to the point where we are. We started in 2016. We were offered the opportunity to apply to become a Vision 2020 school. We conducted a community-wide listening campaign to inform our school's direction. These five areas that we selected didn't just come out of the sky. This is what our community, after being surveyed, what they said they wanted to see at John P. Parker School. We re-envisioned our school's mission and vision with our LSDMC and school partners. And then in November, we began to pilot various projects and initiatives to support project-based learning and service learning to see what we thought would work for our school. So we did some design thinking activities, project-based learning, farm-to-school, edible schoolyard. In December, we were accepted to become part of Vision 2020. So what we did was we divided our staff into teams based upon their interest in these five areas, and we asked them to go and do the research. So we had a GEL leadership team that would, that leadership team would meet with various staff members, and they would brainstorm and do research about what this program should look like. So our partners were also assembled to discuss their new role with this initiative. So our partners were very aware and involved in this process. From January to March, our teams, our GEL teams met, and they developed this concept. So in April, we began to travel to various schools to learn about what this environmental literacy program could look like in elementary, and we continued with professional development for our staff. And now, we are now implementing our first year of Vision 2020. So we have some quick wins. Our superintendent taught us, as turnaround schools, to look at that first ninety days and try to have some quick wins. So quick win number one is our enrollment has increased by sixty-three percent over the past four years, but in this past year, this year, we've seen a twenty percent increase. Quick win number two, we're offering more training to our staff and teaching the core curriculum using innovative strategies. I could go through the list, but in the interest of time, I'll keep moving. Quick win number three, our staff, they're developing hands-on project-based curriculum at all grade levels. At pre-K and K, they're learning about composting, grades one, five, and six. They're using our pumpkins and pumpkin patch for mathematics study. At grade three, they're conducting a recycling project where they're collecting caps. So before I go tonight, if you all could just give me the caps from your water bottles to take back to third grade. They're planning to have these water bottle caps turned into benches that can be placed at our school site. Also promoting the understanding of ecosystems with our garden, with our fifth graders. So quick win number four, this is our work, but it is led by Ms. Pamela Knox. So I feel like it's important for Ms. Knox to speak to her work as our resource coordinator and bringing in more CLC partners and supporters. Ms. Knox.
Thank you for having us. That's an impressive picture up there, isn't it? Yeah, and that's all real, and we're really proud of the work that we do. I'm just gonna highlight a few. I just wanna share with you that we are now in partnership with four universities. We have NKU for Project Learning Tree. We have Ohio State 4H. We have UC Action Research. And what we do there is critical because it is really about sustainability. It's PD for teachers. Once teachers get that, man, it's awesome. We are also with the University of Louisville for the Climate Change Project. This summer, we hosted a summer institute, so mindfulness, mission to move was there. We had Four Winds Nature Institute come in. All of this PD, all of this was PD. Really awesome. Green Acres was there and the World Affairs Council because we know how important it is to understand how to be a global citizen, and teachers understand that first. Resources, Dr. Mack talked about many of these, the Wade Foundation, Five Hundred Gardens, and that's where the chickens come in because we also have five hundred chickens in Madisonville. Leave No Chow Inside, we are nurturing that relationship. Fuel Up, she talked about, and we can go on and on. But the last one, I think, Children's Inc. is assisting us with service learning, and that's really been an awesome adventure for our teachers and now our parents, when Dr. Mack shared with you about their adventure with Marison and the Strong Strides project. So that's what we're doing there, and we're really excited about the work that we're doing, and we really would like for you to come out and see it in action. Those little heartbeats are moving, and they are thinking, and they are growing.
So we have a few next steps. Our Facilities Department was so helpful in getting our electric sign. It was installed in October 2017 through a partnership with MedPace. We're still expecting a fully functioning greenhouse with classroom space. That's coming. A fifty-by-eighty soccer field for youth up to thirteen years old is coming. We are expecting a walking path around our school with a park course. We already have the equipment. The community donated it to us. Now we're just waiting for the park course to be developed. We're planning on a nature playscape, the recycled benches from the third-grade service learning project, a pollinator garden for monarch butterflies, as well as artwork throughout our facility that supports the GEL themes that we've been talking about tonight. We want to continue to apply for more grants to support our vision. We'd like for our staff to get into more professional development, presenting our Vision 2020 focus at conferences around the country, as well as continuing to go and learn more about how we can better implement our program. We'd also like to implement opportunities for school-wide reflection on learning, which is something that we've been doing with our Monday morning meetings and our season learning. So if you wanna check out and have a good time on Monday morning, come by about 7:40. You'll see our kids dancing, enjoying themselves, and also sharing with each other about what they have learned during the week. So we have some testimonials tonight. Unfortunately, some of our parents had little ones and they needed to leave, but we still have a few folks who would like to share. So we're gonna start off with Dr. Hendricks, our LSDMC chair, followed by Morgan Brown, who's a second grader, Mrs. Watson's fifth-grade students, Daisy Jones, a grade-five student, Angela Chandler Jackson, a parent and also a staff member, and the last two ladies had to leave, so we're gonna go in that order.
You're welcome. Good evening. I'll be brief, but I just want to speak to our trajectory because it's somewhat different than the trajectory Chase had. That's pretty hard to say, trajectory Chase had. But because when I started working with Cincinnati Public Schools in Madisonville in 1993, Bramble was the good school and Anderson Place was the behavior school. And so we did have a lot of problems, we really did. We did have low academic success. When Dr. Mack came in 2007, we really, as a school, and at that point, we did not have the support of the community, but as a school, as a staff, we really put our heads together, worked hard, worked really hard. When we started, the state of Ohio was paying parents to send their kids elsewhere. So it was enough to help. And we did it. So by the time, so even before Vision 2020, when our community learning, we had met our Community Learning Center goals, and we decided to become a service learning school because we needed to, A, prove that our students had something to give back, that they were not just needed programs, but they had gifts to offer. We wanted to convince the community that we were not the stereotype that they thought. And so we embedded our learning goals into community action. So when we had the opportunity to become a Vision 2020 school, we were poised. We already had the commitment, we had already built up the staff, and through the wonderful leadership of Mrs. Knox and through Dr. Mack, it was magic. Things just fell into place. So for example, even though we just started a year ago, we are implementing, we were able to have four days of professional development. The teachers gave up their summer days. These weren't school days. All the teachers participated. In fact, I participated too because it was so much fun, because it was meaningful. We are, we're on a huge trajectory, and you can see the impact of this. I'll just briefly, briefly, briefly. So I'm from Wilmington College, and my students also participate in Parker, and I had a student working in the sixth grade with sixth graders, language arts. And they wrote an argumentative essay on whether hydroponic growing or traditional gardening was better. And within a week, with hydroponics, you can grow enough food to eat. They were measuring, how much room does hydroponics take up? How much room does traditional gardening take up? And when students create the evidence with which they are arguing, you know they really understand the concepts of evidence, of rationale, it's deep thinking. So I'm very proud of us, and I want you to be too.
Hi, my name is Morgan Brown. I am a second grader at John P. Parker School. At school, we are learning a lot about our environment and how we can help protect the quality of our environment. Last year, the fifth grade had twenty-four golden cotton chickens. I live in Madisonville, where we have the Five Hundred Chicken Project. My family decided that it would be a great experience to raise chickens, so we adopted three of the chickens. We named our chickens Lucille, Rashida, and Sarah. When the chickens first came home, they were small and had to be kept inside. We had to change their bedding and feed them daily. We also had to keep them warm with a light. When they got a little older and bigger, my dad built them a chicken coop outside in our yard. The chickens adapted well to their new coop. We still had to feed them daily. It takes the chickens almost six months to begin to lay eggs. One of our chickens laid their first egg on October 28th. My family and I split the one egg seven ways so we could all taste it. The egg was very tasty. The chickens lay eggs once a day on warm days. When it gets colder, they do not lay them as often. I boiled seven fresh chicken eggs to share with you today. I hope you enjoy them as much as we do.
Hello. My name is Ms. Watson, and this is my first year at John P. Parker. Nine years ago, a professor gave me a great piece of advice. As we began to apply for teaching positions, he told us that it's not just about a school choosing you, but you choosing the right school for yourself. I have been searching for a school, I'm trying to get emotional. I've been searching for a school with a mission that I could stand behind without any doubt that we were doing the right thing for our students for a really long time. And when I heard about Dr. Mack and the My Tomorrow Plan at John P. Parker, I knew this is the school I've been looking for, and I'm so happy to be here. Global environmental literacy incorporates everything that I believe in as an educator. I'm proud to be at John P. Parker, and I'm even more proud of my students and how they are interacting with the GEL curriculum. So I'm going to turn this over to my students and let them tell you what it's like to be in a GEL classroom.
Hi, my name is Myla Pearson, and today I want to talk to you about the Living Legends Project. We are going on field trips to learn about the Underground Railroad and how slavery was abolished. Since everyone has freedom, African-Americans have been able to contribute to the field trips of STEM. Right now, we are researching African-American inventors to create and publish a book for everyone to read in a traveling museum.
Hello, my name is Jaden Wright. In Language Arts, our key text is The Sign of the Beaver. This story is about a boy who meets Native Americans while he lives all alone in the woods. This story is teaching us how to talk about the tough topics like racism. We are learning that even though you aren't the same skin color, we are all humans and can be friends.
Hi, my name is Caleb.
And my name is Angela. Right now, social studies, we are working on an online document-based question. The question we will answer is, what was the most remarkable achievement of the Mayans? Did you know that Mayans made human sacrifices? We're not only learning about cultures, but cultures all around the world. One of our favorite things is to write responses to National Geographic videos about different countries and regions. I love writing about Ecuador.
In our class, we practice meditation mindful movement. Yoga poses can calm you down if you are anxious or before a test. Please stand up and join us in a yoga pose. Plant your feet firmly on the ground. Breathe in through your nose and out through your mouth. Place your right foot on your inner thigh. Raise your arms slowly up to the sky. Now bring them down in front of you. Take a deep breath in slowly and let it out. You may now place both feet on the ground. Thank you for the presentation. I hope you feel more peaceful now.
I'll have Ms. Mack come up if there are any questions before we conclude the portion, but if we can give John P. Parker a round of applause.
I know we were lengthy, but everybody wanted to share.
We didn't hear, are we going to hear from these young people?
Two more.
Be here now, we like it.
Hello, my name is Daisy, and I want to talk to you about my experience with Cuyahoga Valley Falls. I remember the first thing after we got off the bus was going hiking. And it taught me how to trust in one another and to trust, and to trust counselors. And we also had a zero food waste challenge. And I am proud to say, I'm proud to say, when we left, we only had one ounce of food waste, zero liquid waste. And the reason why I want to be in counselor when I grow is because my counselor named Anna inspired me to want to do this in my life. And she taught me how to connect to nature and to treat it how we like and not to be wasteful. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, Board. My name is Shneig Bane. I am Daisy's mother. I just wanted to briefly, I just wanted to briefly touch on my experience at John P. Parker. We came from Taff Elementary School. My daughter did suffer from self-esteem issues. She does have dyslexia. And I want to say, Dr. Mack, she really pulled out all the stops. She went above and beyond to get my daughter reading and caught up with the other students. Her self-esteem has improved greatly. My daughter now, she does soccer, she plays chess, she did tennis over the summer, drama club, newspaper club, track team. And she is going to go very far thanks to Dr. Mack and the staff at John P. Parker. So I wanted to again say thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Angela Jackson, and this is my daughter Sydney. She is currently in fifth grade at John P. Parker. This is also where I work and where I recently completed my student teaching to earn my master's degree in special education. The Global Environmental Literacy Focus, along with the Roadmap to Freedom additions to the curriculum, have had a positive effect on Sydney's education. These program focuses have strengthened my daughter's growth and development as a learner along with her sense of self. Since attending the four-day camping trip to Cuyahoga Valley Environmental Education Center, she has blossomed into a more self-reliant, confident young lady who has taken ownership of her education. Upon returning, she has been accepted into the college preparatory program, where she is thriving and working hard to get straight A's, a goal she set for herself. This new level of confidence has been noticed by others, as one of her teachers explained in our last conference, that she seems happier, motivated, and more engaged in class. I believe accepting personal responsibility and learning about individual choices that have an impact on the environment contributed to this growth. The emphasis on global environmental literacy and the Roadmap to Freedom is important for all students at John P. Parker, as they will become more aware of themselves as environmental conscious global citizens and future leaders in the fields of science, technology, energy, engineering, and math. Thank you.
So, any questions?
Do board members have any questions or comments? Ms. Hoffman?
I just have one comment. So we talk a lot about equity. Obviously, that's what this entire Vision 2020 plan was about. And I think as a district, we talk about not just equity and outcomes, but that if we wanted equity and outcomes, we had to give our students, families, teachers, staff equity and access and opportunities. And that's what leads to equity and outcomes. And so the slides that Ms. Amat showed of the humongous gains in math and English Language Arts, that's what, that is the equity and the outcomes, right? And then everything you all are showing us tonight about these equity and opportunities for new experiences and new curriculum for our kids, the equity and opportunities for our teachers to have the kind of professional development they need to significantly move their kids forward, that is just so exciting. And I think our superintendent has been talking about how this programming isn't fluff. It was all research-based and designed for those kind of outcomes. And it is so exciting to see this go from this idea and see our principals and teachers and staff just be so innovative and embrace it. This is a whole lot of work. It would be a lot easier to just do status quo, but no one was satisfied with status quo or the incremental gains we were making. We wanted to see big gains. And so I am just, I applaud you, your staff, your families, the students. And when I was a teacher, I used to say, I can work really hard, but I can't open up your head and pour this into your brain, like you have to work just as hard. So those results are the results of stuff that all the adults are doing, but those results are because our students also believe that they could do better. And so I'm just so proud of the work that you all are doing, and just want to make sure I'm expressing my gratitude and thank you all for all that you're doing.
Thank you. I would just like to thank the Board, Superintendent Mitchell, the Assistant Superintendents. Also, because the work that we're doing, we couldn't do without the support of Cincinnati Public Schools to believe in us and to invest in our students. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your work, Ms. Mack. Thank you.
Our last slide. We will continue this great work. Currently, this school year, we have eight schools going through the process, and they're listed here. So we are excited about these eight schools. They not only are starting this effort, but now they have colleagues who have already been through it. So they are encouraging each other and supporting one another. You see this cross-conversation amongst principals and teachers, and it's just fabulous to be a part of the process. And just want to take this opportunity to thank everyone here and the Board's vision and courage to just outright say that we are going to focus on equity for all of our students. They can do it. They need the access. And this was a fantastic example of that work. So thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Amat. Thank you. It looks like I have a couple retirements to present. Darlene Eiler and Kimberly Williams. We are very appreciative of their time with the district and wish them well with their retirement. We're now at the item on our agenda for hearing from the public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Mrs. Wagner, our treasurer on the end, will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, unfortunately, your three minutes have passed. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. Looks like we have one person that we'll invite to the lower podium, and that's Ms. Cara Hill. Is Ms. Hill still with us? Oh, hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, my name's Cara Hill. I'm part of the CANS Advisory Committee for the, you know, the new Clifton Area Neighborhood School. I'm also a parent to one of the preschoolers at the school. And I just wanted to give you a quick update on our school. My family was really excited to find CANS this summer. We just moved here from Milwaukee. And it was great to have our neighborhood school. We didn't have to worry about applying to a magnet or finding a private school. We had a really great public school in our neighborhood, so we were really excited about that. Following the Vision 2020 presentation, I feel like we are another neighborhood school that we have really big dreams for what our school is going to be. Right now, we're small, but I think we can be a really amazing public school. We've been working with Susan Bunty, who's been a great support for us. We've been working on recruitment and trying to get enrollment of our school identity. We've been talking a little bit with the UC Department of Education about partnering with them and really having some amazing innovative learning opportunities for our children. Some of the events that we've had recently have been focused on recruitment for new families. We had a very successful open house in November. We're planning another one in January. This past weekend, we had a cookie decorating party at the Rossin Farmhouse, and that was just a really fabulous event for the whole community. We had most of our CANS families come out, and we also had a lot of potential families come out, which was really exciting. We have a large pool of families that are really interested. One sticking point that people seem to have is the uncertainty of when the school is going to be moving into the old Clifton building. So we're hoping that we can get that resolved soon and be able to give people a concrete answer so that they know what the plan is going to be. But yeah, but just as a parent, I've been really, really happy with the school. We have fabulous teachers. My son comes home smiling every day. All the parents I've spoken to are really happy with the school, and we just hope with your support that we can keep continuing to grow so we can be another model school like the other ones that we've heard from earlier. So thank you so much, and thank you for your continued support.
We have several resolutions that we need to consider. Well, first, I will present a resolution to appoint a representative to the Ohio School Boards Association Board of Trustees. Ms. Melanie Bates, Board Member Melanie Bates, has agreed to continue her work with the Ohio School Boards Association Board of Trustees. And so I present the resolution for consideration. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Copeland-Dansby?
Aye. Ms. Hoffman, would you please present the resolution for board consideration?
I gladly will. So I am presenting a resolution adopting New Board Policy 5820.01, Student Involvement and School Board Decision Making. And I'm going to read kind of the presentation here of the policy. So whereas the Cincinnati Board of Education Policy Committee was assigned to investigate the expansion of opportunities for students to have input and involvement in school board decision-making, and whereas the policy committee conducted a thorough review of student involvement and school board decision-making in other school districts, and had multiple meetings with student representatives to gain their input on the addition of a student involvement policy here in CPS, and whereas Cincinnati Board of Education has determined that the addition of a board policy is needed to increase student involvement in school board decision-making, and whereas Board Policy 5820.01, Student Involvement and School Board Decision Making, has been drafted and reviewed by the Board Policy Committee, reviewed by the student representatives, and recommended for adoption by the full Board of Education, now therefore be it resolved that the Cincinnati Board of Education adopts Board Policy 5820.01, Student Involvement and School Board Decision Making as written, and be it further resolved that a copy of the board policy will be posted online. And so I submit this policy as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comment?
Yes, we have had a student who was probably like, maybe, I don't know if I want to be part of this if their meetings go this late. So I want to first promise them, most of our meetings don't go this long. But I wanted to introduce Mr. Watkins, who is a senior at Hughes-Stem High School. He is one of the students who has participated in these meetings. What we did on the policy committee was present the idea to them. They did all of the work. And so we wanted him to come and talk a little bit about the experience and so that you all could hear, since it's the student voice policy, straight from our students.
Yes, come onto the podium, young man. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being patient and waiting.
It was no problem. I'm overwhelmed. It's been a long night, it's been a long day. If only y'all knew and could be in my mind. To see my elementary school here at John P. Parker, that was amazing for me. To see my principal, Ms. Mack, who is now Dr. Mack, that was amazing. To get into the experience that I had with this, with the gathering that we did to come up with this policy. The three meetings were strenuous. We had to compromise with one another, and with us being 40 students and from different schools, it was so much to be said. It was so many different... It was so many different views that we had to put in perspective. We had to, we had to accept that Woodward was different than Hughes and Hughes was different than Woodward and Withrow and all the other schools. And then we realized that we all really feel the same way in the end. And it's that they don't know us. They being you as board members. We don't think that you know us. We don't think that you think we exist because every time we hear something in our schools or every time we want to do something, every time we're passionate about something, it's the board or the district or, well, go to the district. Well, they have these meetings at nights. They long, but you got three minutes, you can say. And by the time the teacher say all that, it's like, well, do I really, do I really want to go? So yes, this was very helpful. These, these three meetings were very helpful. I would like to, I don't want to prolong the time or anything, but I really want to give the background on how I got involved. So the first meeting, I did not attend, but I was involved with something that was very helpful to, to all the schools as well. The um leadership collaboratives. Whoever started that is amazing. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna blame all y'all together.
That's your superintendent.
That's amazing. I, I'm, I'm so intrigued and so overwhelmed that somebody would come up with that. That is what led, I believe that that's what made us engage. That's what made us want to do the policy um association, to get us all together, to be a part of that. So with that, I wasn't going to do it, but it was offered to me at one of those leadership collaborative meetings. And I turned it down because it's like, I'm doing too much in my school. I'm all involved, everybody asks me questions about this stuff. And then it becomes my, one of my mentors, Ms. Keith, at my school says, I need you to do this. And she stopped me at lunch and I go and Ms. Jones, when we get there, she starts talking about how she went to Hughes and it's like, well, maybe this is meant for me. Maybe, maybe I deserve to be here. So with that and with the um support of people who I went to elementary school with, people who I knew in the neighborhood, we all came together and we all really realized that if we could get involved with this thing beyond our high schools, then maybe we could come together and start something even more better than what's going on, you know, just that we could, we could collaborate with each other. Different high schools have different focuses. We are the only STEM high school that I, that I've heard of, you know? And I don't know really about what Taff is doing or what Woodward is doing, but I think that if we collaborate more, that we can learn from each other as not only high school students, but as young uprising, up-and-coming adults. So that's why I believe in this policy and I really do think that, that it needs to be recognized for not only the class of 2018, but 2019 and so on and so on. Now, something that we would like to see after, I'm going to quote it based off of a situation that I had with another student who was a part of it while I was downtown. I was getting on the bus and he saw me and he was like, yeah, I think that we should get together more and the teachers will get on board. And then we could reach out to the K through six people. And then th- those young people and then they could start something and they could start doing like Ms. Mack and the other principals were doing and get involved with the community more. But not only get involved with the community, but get more involved with high schools. I went to one um K through six school and they had high school doors, like we have college doors. And that's something that we could give more insight on if we were, you know, more closely with the board in the decision-making. So that's, that's why it's important to me. I don't have anything else to say. I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
And we think you're great.
Thank you.
So listen. For participation and thank you for just not giving up on something that you know to be important. And um I want to ask you about your plans after high school, but...
Ooh, I forgot about that.
I did, that was, I'm anxious to hear it.
Okay. Okay, so she didn't say, but my name is Zephaniah Watkins. I attend Hughes STEM High School. I'm a senior there. I plan on going directly across the street to the University of Cincinnati. And I would like to major in uh social work, get my bachelor's in social work and hopefully master's in professional counseling. And I would like to minor in education. So I really want to be involved with um younger children between K through six and high school children as well, making a, making that transition between middle school and high school because that was a problem for me. I didn't know what was going on and I had a lot of different, as my principal would say, situations going on during that transition. So I, I, I really want to go to UC and I want to be like you guys when I grow up, honestly. I don't know what that consists of, but I want to be like you guys.
Good. I'm really pleased to meet you. Thank you for your participation and I'm going to ask my colleagues as we move forward from here, how to continue this involvement. And I want to congratulate our board member Hoffman because this has been important to her for a very, very long time. And so I'm proud of you and I appreciate your work here too and your work as well. So nice to meet you.
I got a question.
Yes.
It just came to mind.
Be careful now. I hope we can answer.
Okay, so earlier today, at Hughes, my principal and other staff members had our LSDMC meeting. And that was something that kept being talked about. So I was like, well, I should bring it up. So the question is, as a student who's leaving high school, I kind of feel really sad and I know that students in the past from class twenty seventeen and seventeen felt sad about leaving high school and not being able to be involved deeply with, with, with the high school students who we mentored and who we, who we made a big impact on. And we want to know how is that possible? So one thing that was discussed by our principals was funds and, you know, financially, it becomes a problem because it kind of costs too much to be a volunteer in CPS schools uh these days. And with college and everything going on, that... Yeah, so with the time and the cost, it's, it doesn't really add up for us as college students. So I, I stand on behalf of them as well, asking how, how can we get more involved?
Good question. And I think that poses something for our superintendent and her staff to really ponder and to work with your principal, who then can work with, with you. And um Ms. Wright is also an amazing person over at your...
Oh yeah, she is. She...
She's amazing. And so we'll, we'll find a way to follow up with her to get some information back to you. And again, I just am so encouraged by you even wanting to continue to participate with your high school.
Not just my high school.
Right across the street.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Very nice.
That gives you all a little taste of how much fun this was for us to work on. And I know we say all the time, our students are brilliant and
Yes.
we posed a big challenge to them. What could this look like? Um and when they came across issues, like they would say to us, well, what happens if? And then we would say back to them, well, what happens if? And they would have to work it out, like, like he said, they had to compromise and talk and figure it out. And it's been really a great process to be a part of.
Very nice.
So I wanted to thank all of those students.
Yes, thank you. I do want to make note on line four or whereas number four in your, in the policy, it says Board Policy 5820.01, Student Involvement in, we need to insert, School Board Decision Making.
Okay.
Same thing on whereas number five.
It is.
It is. I'm looking at a revised. I have a revised.
No, you don't have the, there should, there's another revised.
I have a blue revised. She has a red revised.
There's a red revised.
Okay, well, good. I have a good proofreader. I just wanted to make sure that, that was caught. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye. Ms. Jones? Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Copeland Dansby?
Yes. Ms. Jones, you've got three in a row here.
Let me just keep going.
Just keep giving them to me. Give me the first one.
The first one, um I present for board consideration, a resolution for advanced payment of taxes. We've done this before. I don't know, treasurer, in discussion or do we want to wait with the motion? I'm going to present the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
I can just do a quick explanation. This gives me the authority to ask the um Hamilton County Auditor to forward to us any taxes that they collect in advance. So it's in our cash account instead of theirs.
Okay, any other discussion or comments or questions? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Copeland Dansby?
Yes. Ms. Jones, please present us with your next resolution.
The next resolution um for board consideration is fiscal year 2017, 2018 amended appropriations resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Copeland Dansby?
Aye. And Ms. Jones, one final resolution for the night.
I present for board consideration, a resolution requesting authority from the Hamilton County Budget Commission to file a modified tax budget for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comment? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Copeland Dansby?
Aye. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I would just like to bring to the board's attention um in the Civil Service Personnel section of the superintendent's report, the death of um an employee Angel, I'm sorry, Vanessa Axel. She was a food service helper. Just wanted to bring that to your attention and just express to her family our condolences and also just to express the years of service that she was with CPS.
Our condolences to her and her family. Okay, so that threw me off a little bit. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Copeland Dansby?
Aye. Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer? Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Manera?
Aye.
Mr. Timmons?
Aye.
President Copeland Dansby?
Yes. Are there any inquiries or updates? How about assignments, Ms. Hoffman?
Yes, um so per the Student Achievement Committee meetings, uh I'm sorry, meeting minutes, um assigning to the policy committee a draft of a policy for the Business Advisory Council that was part of the Student Advisory, I'm sorry, Student Achievement Committee Minutes. And then my second assignment...
Let me just be clear, do we know what that means?
Yep.
I, I do.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Those gains that Ms. Amat shared with us are just phenomenal. And I'm guessing that our Public Affairs Team is already on top of figuring out how to make sure that that is something that is not buried on our website. That is something we should be very proud of.
Be to it.
Yeah. And so our assignment would be figure out how is that something that you cannot miss if you are coming to our website and we can't control what the media decides is a story, but that should be on the front page of our city's newspaper. I mean, no, how, yeah. Doubling, doubling the, the, the percentage of kids passing in so many schools is really phenomenal work. And so we want to make sure we are celebrating that.
Well, yeah, and I'll echo that in having spent a great deal of time recently campaigning in that for reelection, I heard a lot from the community just about, okay, Vision 2020, what are the results? Well, we have results and we need to tell people what those results are. I mean, even a press release, whether, like Ms. Hoffman says, if it gets picked up or not, but to put it out there and to put it on our website. I think we probably, and you guys probably measure this, but we probably get more traffic on our website than we might think. So it, it would help if it were prominent in that. I mean, it's amazing, in our neighborhood schools.
And I think the issue forty-four, there's a lot of press around the fifteen million dollars part of that with the preschool, but what we campaigned on was that the larger part of that was going to go to making sure
That's right.
that the K to twelve
That's right.
was seeing not just incremental growth, but big growth and we were going to invest in our K to twelve. And this shows our community a return on that investment.
I agree. Any other assignments? Having no other business, let's go watch the Bengals. We're adjourned.
I don't know.[1729.01]